Public hearing to order. Happy spring. No, winter, fall. Today's the journal equinox. I will call the roll. Our secretary is out. So Vice Chair, Vice Chair Dennis.
Secretary present.
President. George Mutu.
Present.
Tom Neely.
Present.
Craig Cannon-Lamota.
Present.
Jackie LaFaro, Chair, present. Gloria Burke, Secretary, absent. And Kate.
Fulham.
Fulham, absent. We do have a quorum. Please join us in the Pledge of Allegiance. Thank you. Just a few procedural notes. We have quite a few applications tonight. And so when you go to the podium, please give your name and affiliation and fill it in, unless we have sheets for all of the public hearings.
We do.
Okay, so we have that. Now for.
If anybody is on Zoom after the public has spoken that is here, you will ask, the Chair will ask if anybody would like to speak from Zoom. If you do want to speak on that particular public hearing, you would raise your hand and the moderator will allow you in.
All right. Just as long as you state what application you'd like to speak with, because it's hard for our technician to know what application you'd like to speak on. So state your name, your application that you're addressing, and raise your hand. Okay? So we're going to go in the order of the agenda. And Alice Clifton is first. Do we have notice, Council?
Yes, we do, Madam Chair.
We do. Read it into the notice. Craig is reading.
Please take notice that in accordance with local law number 417 of 2022, a public hearing will be held by the Southampton Town Planning Board on Thursday, September 22, 2022, at 6:00 p.m. at Town Hall 116 Hampton Road, Southampton, and via video conferencing to consider the lot line modification entitled Alice Clifton. The application proposes to transfer the D-Access flag strip from Lot 1, 122 Strong's Lane, to Lot Number 2, 132 Strong's Lane, in exchange for an easement over Lot 1 already takes access with both properties improved with single-family residences situated in the CR80 zoning district, Aqua for Protection overlay district, and agricultural overlay district located at 122 and 132 Strong's Lane, Watermill Suffolk County Tax Map Number 900-81-3-11 and 17.
Thanks, Craig.
For the applicant, David Gilmore, Greenberg, Trois, 2317 Montauk Highway Bridge, Hampton. And just as a point of clarification, the lot line modification will result in the flipping of the ownership of.
David, you're going to be asked to stay by that microphone so someone doesn't jump out from there. I don't know how you're going to do it.
Speak loudly.
So we're actually flipping the ownership of the two access ways. Lot Number 1, which is the rear lot, gains access, legal access, over the western right-of-way. However, that's not used, right? The both lots gain access on the east side. Lot Number 1 is looking to own its access, the actual access that it uses to come back. So we're looking at flipping those two access ways. The reason we have to do it is both lots are non-conforming in size, so we need to have an equal, an equal flip to make sure that they remain the same non-conforming size that they were. I noticed there's a five-foot discrepancy, so by the time we get to the work session, that will be cleared up. But that's the gist. Again, Lot Number 1 will own the actual access. I have an aerial. I don't know if I can approach or I'll get yelled at.
Claire.
But I can sort of show you on the, on the aerial.
Yeah, you can if you speak at the counter.
So here is, these are the two lots. This, this is where Lot Number 1, their legal access is here. As you can tell, nothing's there. It's not open, and they both gain access here. Lot Number 1 has an easement that they'd like to convert to an ownership. And again, Lot Number 2, which is the front lot, will need to get the equal amount of accessway or lot area to maintain their non-conforming size. So that's the gist of it. It's, it's just basically an equal swap. And, and Lot Number 1 will then give Lot Number 2 an easement over that access. So it'll just, it'll remain the same. It's a family situation.
So both parties are in agreement?
Well, it's, it's a mother and daughter, so I hope so.
You never know.
So far, so good. And I can answer any questions, but it seems to be pretty straightforward.
Any questions from the board?
No.
Anyone from the public wishes to speak to this application? Alice Clifton?
No one's signed.
Okay, hearing none. We'll.
Do you want to see if anybody?
Oh, yes. Do you have hands raised? For the Alice Clifton application? He said there's a hand raised, but he doesn't know if it's for this application.
There's no way for them to know, so you just have to, like, say the name again before you go to Zoom. Anybody who wants to speak on Alice Clifton, raise your hand.
If, if, this is the Alice Clifton application. If you've raised your hand in Zoom, that's the application that you'd be speaking to?
Okay.
Okay. No, so no. So we have no, no one on Zoom for the application. So we'll close with a 10-day written comment period. Motion by Craig, second by Dennis, all in favor. Post extensions, five in favor and two absent.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Liberty Reel, Inc., Hamlet of Watermill. Do we have notice, Council?
We do, Madam Chair.
Okay, great. Tom, you're reading this into the record?
Yes. Please take notice that in accordance with local law number 417 of 2022, a public hearing will be held by the Southampton Town Planning Board on Thursday, September 22, 2022, at 6:00 p.m. at Town Hall 116 Hampton Road, Southampton, and via teleconferencing to consider the pre-application entitled Noyak Northview LLC.
Liberty.
And let's, do I have the wrong one?
Yeah. It wasn't in order.
Liberty.
I apologize. Let me start again. Please take notice that in accordance with local law number 417 of 2022, a public hearing will be held by the Southampton Town Planning Board on Thursday, September 22, 2022, at 6:00 p.m. at Town Hall 116 Hampton Road, Southampton, and via video conferencing to consider the pre-submission conference entitled Liberty Reel, Inc. The site plan application, which proposes a new 6,000-square-foot prefabricated metal building, special trade contractor, with basement for storage and mechanical equipment and conversion of an existing two-story dwelling to office space on the first floor and a 595-square-foot apartment on the second floor on a 51,747.
Square foot parcel.
Can I have that? Do you have the others?
No, it's, it's done. Square foot parcel.
Square foot parcel. HB zoning.
District.
And do we have the tax map number? And that's Suffolk County Tax Map Number 900-132-03-010.
Thank you, Tom.
Good afternoon, good evening, Board members. Wayne Bruin, O'Shea Martin-Sincic and Bruin on behalf of Liberty Reel, Inc. The Board may remember this property. This has been in the Deegan family for several decades. The property, as noted in the notice, is on the north side of County Road 39 and also fronts on the south side of Flying Point Road. It's adjacent to a Suffolk County recharge basin, and it's opposite the Liberty Iron, Iron Works, which is on the south side of County Road 39 in the light industrial zone. The application, we're in the highway business zone. The application for pre-submission consideration is to construct a 6,000-square-foot building as indicated with a basement for storage and mechanical equipment. There is a pre-existing two-story dwelling on the property. The plan is to convert the first floor to office and maintain the second floor for workforce housing. The proposed building, there's elevations you can see on Number 2 here on the right, is to be used for metal fabrication and storage, you know, associated with the existing Liberty Iron Works across the street. The property has been used for outdoor storage recently, and this would, in hopes, put everything indoors for the most part. The proposed building is oriented in a way that is running parallel to County Road 39 with the necessary 50-foot landscape buffer. There will be one access on County Road 39 and one on Flying Point. It's hoped that the access would be primarily used for entrance off of County Road 39 or right turns out, and then access to Flying Point, so it could go utilize roads to the north or come back to the intersection with the light. There is public water, and there will be an IA system that will serve both buildings. So we're here. If you have any particular questions, we look forward to your input on a pre-application report.
Any questions from the board on this? Is there anyone from the public who'd like to speak to Liberty Reel, Inc. application? Is there anyone on Zoom who'd like to speak to the Liberty Reel, Inc. application? Raise your hand. So no hands, no Zoom. Okay, we'll close with a 10-day written comment.
Pre-submission conference, 30 days?
Is it pre-submission?
It is.
Pre-submission, 30 days. 30-day by motion, by Dennis, second by George, all in favor. Post extensions, five in favor, two absent. Thank you. Number three is the Wireless Tower, W. West Hampton Cemetery. We have notice on that?
We do, Madam Chair.
Okay. And.
I was going to read that.
Tom?
I'll give this one a shot. Please take notice that in accordance with local law number 417 of 2022, a public hearing will be held by the Southampton Town Planning Board on Thursday, September 22, 2022, at 6:00 p.m. at Town Hall 116 Hampton Road, Southampton, and via video conferencing to consider the site plan application entitled Wireless Towers LLC, West Hampton. The subject property is for the site plan/special exception application to construct a 105-foot wireless communication facility, concealment pole, and accessory structures on a 132,102 square-foot vacant parcel located in the MTL zoning district with the New York State archaeologically sensitive area and the WQI medium priority area located at 52 Montauk Highway, West Hampton, West Hampton Town of Southampton, Suffolk County Tax Map 900-356-2-1.8.
Bailey Larkin with Bennett and Reed, offices at 212 Windmill Lane and in Southampton on behalf of the applicant. This is a request for site plan and special exception approval to construct a 105-foot high concealment pole. This tower would accommodate AT&amp;T, Verizon, and T-Mobile. We had been here a couple of years ago for our pre-application. At that time, it was proposed at 125 feet in height, and the height has since been reduced. And also, AT&amp;T has been added to the application. This facility has been designed as a unipole, so all the antennas and a cabling will be installed within the structure itself. There won't be anything hanging off like traditional monopoles. There's also a proposed fence compound at the base of the pole, and that fence compound has been designed to accommodate the equipment of AT&amp;T, Verizon, T-Mobile, and.
Recording in progress.
Oh, okay. A future fourth carrier could potentially install their antennas within this pole and within the compound that's proposed. Verizon, T-Mobile, and AT&amp;T are licensed by the FCC to provide services in this area. They're considered public utilities under zoning laws. And at this time, they've demonstrated that they have a significant service gap in this area. We had submitted with our application a report from PierCon, and actually, we do have the person who drafted the report available on Zoom if there's any questions. But just to summarize, in the interest of time tonight, there has been a demonstration of a significant gap in service in this area, and that gap extends along Montauk Highway for a mile and a half to two miles, depending on which carrier. This site has been designed to remedy that gap. There'll be an increase in service along Montauk Highway and also in the residential neighbors, neighborhoods to the south of Montauk Highway and also to the northwest. So there will be a significant improvement in coverage, which also is an improvement for emergency purposes, especially if there's any sort of 911 calls necessary along Montauk Highway especially, you know, summer traffic. In the interest of time, I was just going to actually introduce the individuals who came this evening. Neil McDonald is with WFC Architects, and he's the project architect on the site. His firm created the site plan. I also submitted last week with the board a letter from Christopher Blaumer, P.E., explaining the structure of this proposed tower. It is proposed to be tucked in the corner of the property about 24 feet off the property lines. But as Mr. Blaumer explained in his letter, it's going to be engineered so that there's no concern for any sort of failure of the tower to cross over property lines. Steve Naroda with Aries Design and George Flanagan are here this evening. They had prepared a visual study that was presented to the board previously, and I believe they brought additional copies of their report if anyone would like to walk through their analysis. They had actually traveled to the site and brought a drone that was raised to the elevation of the tower. They then traveled the neighborhood and photographed the site and then created the model of the tower to show exactly what it will look like from the surrounding area. So that's actually been being submitted now. I also submitted last week an appraisal from Lynch Appraisals. Mr. Lynch was unable to attend tonight, but his report includes several studies, including one that he recently conducted based on a 165-foot tower that was built in, recently, 2016 on Prospect in Southampton Village. He's also studied properties in the surrounding area of the PSEG Long Island Building that has a tower located in the rear. After analyzing this property and conducting his studies, he concludes in his report that the proposed facility will not result in any negative effects to property values in the area nor any adverse effect on the character of the neighborhood or the pattern of development. In addition, I submitted last week with you a health and safety study. It's an emissions study prepared by Pinnacle Telecom Group. And David Collins with Pinnacle Telecom Group is available if there are any questions on the report. Essentially, he concludes that this is 10 times below the allowable limit for emissions. And he conservatively estimated the emissions from the proposed facility. Lastly, and I actually already kind of talked about it, but I had submitted a report from PierCon Solutions analyzing the existing service deficiencies for the carriers that are proposing to co-locate here. It includes maps showing service deficiencies and the coverage that's anticipated from this. That report also, as requested during the pre-application stage, addressed whether or not installing facilities at 47 Station Road in West Hampton Beach, where there is currently a site that was identified in the comprehensive master plan, would accommodate this service deficiency. And they found that it would not. T-Mobile actually already has their antennas on that pole, and given the distance topography, and it's explained in the report that was submitted, Verizon and AT&amp;T's antennas couldn't be installed at 47 Station Road and provide service to this portion of West Hampton. I also did want to mention, there was a question raised at one of the meetings we had about any impact to air navigation. And I did submit a copy of an FAA determination of no hazard to air navigation. That determination was actually issued when the pole was proposed at 125 feet in height, so we're actually going to be lower, and they had concluded it was no concern at 125. And again, we're proposing at 105. Unless there's any specific questions, I can have Steve go through the visuals or Neil explain the site.
We have several people who.
You do?
Who would like to have some questions.
Okay.
Let's do that.
Let's do that. All right.
Are there any immediate questions on the board, part of the board? Tom Rogers? Tom Rogers wants to speak?
Yeah, I don't have any comment right now.
Okay. Tony Burke?
Good afternoon, Planning Board. I'm Tony Joe Burke. I live at 1 Percy Street, very close to the proposed site of the cell tower. And in looking at the town's wireless communications transmission support structures and antennas report that was accepted by local law 33-208, amended on May 27, 2008 by local law number 33-2008, I just had a couple of notes. I am against this. And in looking at this that the town has, and under purposes and findings, and I'm just going to do a couple of bullets, bear with me here, it's the public policy is to minimize the visual and environmental impacts of wireless communication facilities in the process of allowing for adequate, da-da-da-da-da-da-da, nondiscriminatory wireless service throughout the town in accordance with FTC Act 1996. To achieve the goals, and I'm going to just take bullets, and I apologize for cutting through, but you guys can all get this online through the town if you want to see it. Seek to promote wireless facilities that are compatible with surrounding land uses and that protect and retain the attractiveness, health, safety, general welfare, and property values of the community. This location that's been identified, and I don't have the exact footage, and it's probably right here, but for, it is right next to a parcel of land that the Community Preservation Fund has purchased so future generations can enjoy the greenery and the beauty of this land. West Hampton is the gateway to the Hamptons. And people, and we know there's been a change with the pandemic and everybody coming out here and being out here, and I myself, I've been out here over 30 years. And although things are changing, I like to think we keep things the same. A lot of people are coming out this way. The character and quality of what people initially came out here for is changing. And I'd hate to think that West Hampton's going to have a wireless tower at the gateway of West Hampton in an area that has been purchased for preservation land. And actually, this looks inaccurate what I'm looking at here. There is, there is a home here. This is not accurate. I don't know what the data is on it, but that isn't accurate. And you've got Gabreski Airport that, granted, she made a comment about the aviation, there's got to be other sites where this could be erected and not right by residences, preservation land, and a gateway. We need to try to hold on to our community and what a lot of us came out here for, were born and raised here, came out here and want to enjoy. The, the area is changing. Quickly, they're going to cut down 20 trees. We need as many trees as we can for our environment, for how we're breathing, for our life, for the natural, for nature, for wildlife that is there. In this as well, avoidance areas in agricultural lands and open space, greenbelt areas, and it says unless installation is fully camouflaged or stealth. Cheesy, not, not compatible with the area. Avoidance area, existing single-family dwellings in residential zones. Right there, residential, I live right there, along with my neighbors as well. And then designated avoidance areas, again, designated conservation areas, including, but not limited to, lands purchased through the Community Preservation Fund. That's all I have to say. I wish I had been able to attend some other meetings before it got to this point, but with the pandemic and with life and just everything else, I haven't been able to get here until today. But I really hope you take serious consideration about this because it's going to ruin the quality of West Hampton as we know it right here. And I'm not even going to go into what the radioactive, what the effects of it are. I'm just trying to go with the visual and trying to help our town stay, stay nice. There are plenty of other places that they could identify this.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Is it Burke, Pink?
It's me. I, I, I'm with her.
Okay. So you're taking your support what she says?
Absolutely, not in favor.
Thank you. Sean Met?
My name is Sean Met, and I'm representing, I live on Seabreeze Avenue, about 1,000 feet away from where this proposed cell tower is going to go. I have young children, and there's 24 residences along this street here. And like, like Tony said, I totally support everything she said. This is, this is sort of a travesty to me. There's no gap in cellphone service. I, I know we can all make that up and whatever. I lived here for 12 years. I drive down this street. All my friends, another neighbor on Percy, Brian Graves, is here to support us two. And we've never had problems with cellphone service in front of Rubio's, this whole area. There's never been trouble with cellphone service. So I, I get it. We all want to take a piece of land. We want to build a cell tower and collect a royalty forever and keep adding to it, and that's wonderful. But let's go back to this is completely unnecessary. And, you know, there's a wonderful tower on the Suffolk County Water Authority Building over in a great spot by the police barracks over off Old Country Road. It has a huge overlay that goes right past our house, and actually, the overlay, and I don't know, I'm sure they've looked into this, but I'd like you guys to press them to really review this. The overlay from this tower at the, at the Suffolk Water Authority, and they have everything there. It's a giant tower, massive tower, and that stretches all the way over here to Seabreeze Avenue and down to everywhere that, they're saying there's no coverage, but I, I don't understand what they're talking about without the coverage. I'd like to preserve the wilderness that the CPF saved 50 acres across the street from my house. And this is a graveyard association purchased this piece of land for a graveyard association. Now, I don't understand how the graveyard association now turns into this cellphone company, and who gets the money? I don't care about the money. I care about the wilderness and the animals, and this is very, you know, Hampton's-like, but let's keep the, if I wanted to live in Queens and see cellphone towers on every corner, that'd be great. But we're, we're in West Hampton Beach, and this area it's in, like I said, 50 acres is preserved. They were going to propose like, I think, like 60 or 70 condos. Instead, my daughters and I, we ride our bikes, we walk the street. It's a very quiet, beautiful street. This area it's in is, is just, it's gorgeous. And to put this cellphone, cellphone tower there is going to, it's going to be an eyesore. And like Tony said, you're coming into, you're coming into this nice stretch, there's a big plot of land there, and boom, you know, do we want to see a cellphone tower? Unnecessary is the key word here. It's unnecessary. I know everybody likes to make money. We want to, you know, get all fancy and propose all this stuff. Everyone needs architects and, you know, royalties. Everyone needs architects and, you know, royalties. So back to, there's, there's, there's a, the State Environmental Quality Review Act, I think it's called CICRA, is the acronym, and I feel, given the potentially large significant impact to our little community over here, which also reaches down to Beaver Dam Creek, and there's a lot of beautiful homes there, that this is very close to, this is, again, deceiving, there, there's a ton of houses over here. I'm 1,000 feet away from this tower that is 10 times less harmful than the regular radio act, whatever they do with these cellphone towers. There's nothing healthy about this. And it, it's a shame that we all, and these two houses here are new homeowners, and they have a bunch of young kids. They're within 400 feet of this tower. Okay, it's 100 feet. Oh, it's not too big, maybe it was 165. Okay, well, let's go 100 feet. How about we go 0 feet? How about we get rid of this? Go find another piece of land on another, I'm sorry, but the graveyard? You're going to put this in the graveyard? Who's ancestors? Like, this is ridiculous. So I think we need to have the State Environmental Quality Review Act. We need, we need them to warrant a positive declaration, persuade the situation. A draft environmental impact statement, I think, is required actually for this. I don't know if you prepared that, but I'd like to see it. I think the board should review it and see if this is, again, is this necessary? I never drop a call, and I've never had anybody, I have a lot of guests, no one ever complains about cellphone service over here. Sure, the same two applicants complain all the time, but, you know, for this deal, but...
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mett.
Sorry. Thank you for your time. I really appreciate it.
Thanks.
And I do not support this.
This is the wireless tower of West Hampton Cemetery. Is there anyone on Zoom who'd like to speak to this? If you are, just raise your hand. Anyone wishing to speak to the wireless tower?
I'm bringing in one now. Somebody coming in.
Hello?
Yes.
Oh, hi. Yes. Good evening, Planning Board. This is Sandy Mauer.
Sunny, if you could start your video. There you go.
I'm trying.
There you are.
Technical difficulties have been a little bit rough here. I can't see you, but I'm assuming you can see me now.
We can.
I am here on behalf of the West Hampton Cemetery Association. I am the current Vice President, and I just wanted to weigh in because there's a future cemetery that's going to be constructed in this property where this cell tower is going to be located. And, you know, I've had a lot of people reach out to me personally to tell me that they don't have cell service, but that's not the, you know, this establishing long-term revenue streams for cemetery maintenance in New York State is extraordinarily challenging. The cell tower is going to be a tremendous opportunity for us to be able to care for the cemetery in the future. You know, people are buried, and they pay a certain amount into a maintenance program, but that doesn't last for an eternity to care for, for the structures and the fences and, and all of the, you know, maintenance that goes along with the trees and everything else. We have been working for a very long time with different properties, trying to work with the town in order to find the right property to, because the other cemetery is close to, to capacity. So we are planning for the future here because we need to have a location to bury our loved ones, for people who live locally, who want to, you know, have their family members interred in a place where they can reach them and be able to visit. You know, this is not about, you know, greed or money, or it's about the fact that we need to, we have a responsibility to be able to maintain these cemeteries. If we are unable to continue on and maintain either one of these private cemeteries, the town then has an obligation to take those cemeteries over and manage them themselves. I, as the town clerk, I manage 11 historic cemeteries that over the years were turned over to the town. But, you know, this is, this is something we desperately need in order to, to keep, keep us afloat for the future. So I just wanted to weigh in and say that because we're not trying to, to ruin the entrance to the village or do any of that. I'm a lifetime resident of, of the Village West Hampton Beach, and, and I care very much about that. I'm currently trying to get that flagpole fixed on the corner when you, when you enter the, the area. But, but, you know, this is something that we've been working a long time towards, and we're trying to mitigate the impact on the neighborhood as best that we could in order to make this, you know, palatable for, for the community and to allow us to, to be able to establish this long-term revenue stream. And that's really all I have to say.
Great.
But thank you for allowing me to speak.
Thank you so much.
I appreciate your consideration on this matter.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else who wishes to speak to this via Zoom? Any other hands for the wireless tower of West Hampton Cemetery?
No.
Did he say no? Okay. Given that, site plan special exception.
Detention.
Yeah. No questions on the board? Entertain a motion to close with a 10-day written comment period?
Motion.
Motion by Craig, second by Dennis. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions? Five in favor, two absent. Thank you. Okay, we're moving on to the Noack Northview LLC.
And I'll take that.
George is reading?
We have proper notice, yes.
We have notice, thank you.
Please take notice that in accordance with local law number 417 of 2022, a public hearing will be held by the Southampton Town Planning Board on Thursday, September 22, 2022, at 6:00 p.m. at Town Hall 116 Hampton Road, Southampton, and via video conferencing to consider the pre-application entitled Noack Northview LLC. The application, which proposes a four-lot planned residential development cluster plan with approximately 6.891 acres of, of open space, or 300, 301,94 square feet, of a vacant 12.1, 212-acre parcel situated in both the CR80 and CR200 zoning districts, Aquifer Protection Overlay District, and New York State Archaeological Sensitive Area located on Northview Hills Court, Suffolk County Tax Map Number 900-14-1-67.
Good eve, good evening, Board members. Wayne Bruin, O'Shea Morrison-Sigman-Bruin, on behalf of the applicant, Noack Northview LLC. We're also here on behalf of the landowner, Clifford Foster Revocable Trust, and I do have the principal, Mr. Morrow, here for Northview, Noack Northview LLC. As the notice indicated, this is the subdivision, proposed subdivision of a 12.212-acre vacant tract of land. It's located on the west side of Northview Hills Court. Northview Hills Court was established in the subdivision in North, Northview Hills, approved by this planning board in the early 90s. Northview Hills Court is a town-maintained road. The zoning, as indicated in the notice, the northerly end of the tract is R80, and you can see on the plans here, label number four, standard plan on the left, cluster plan on the right. You can see the zoning line splits the property. The northerly portion is in the, the R80 zoning district, and the southerly portion is in the CR200. All portions of the property are in the Aquifer Protection Overlay District. The property is also adjacent on the west to lands that were dedicated to the town via the Bridge Quip Sud. In fact, that property, and it's shown on the plans, contains the existing Palmonok path. We have submitted two plans for your consideration. One is the standard lot yield plan. It has four lots, all complying to the, either the portions in the R80 or the one lot in the CR200, total of four lots. We've also provided the PRD, or Cluster Alternative, that shows four lots, the average lot size of 57, 950 square feet. Because the property is split between the two zones, there is a proportionate amount of open space. As you know, in the R80, subdivision's only required to provide 50% open space. In the CR200, you're required to have 65%. So here we have a little over 56% that meets the proportionate share from each of the zones. The property, we, we've clustered lots primarily to the southeasterly portion of the property, fronting on, with all the lots fronting right on Northview Hills Court, and a large open space, which adjoins open space that you obtained in the Northview Hills map, as well as maps to the north. So we've coordinated that open space. In addition, we provided a swath along the westerly side to adjoin the area where the existing Palmonok path is. On the northerly portion, there is an, an existing unmarked trail. Actually, we're not sure where it goes to in the north. It goes through some developed and undeveloped lands. But nonetheless, we provided that in the open space. We've also showed a concept how if that trail were to be maintained, it could be connected to the existing Palmonok path. Public water exists on Noack Road, several thousand feet away from the property. When the planning board approved the Northview Hills subdivision, it required three fire cisterns, all of which exist in proximity to the lots immediately, one on the cul-de-sac, one basically in the middle, and the other on, on the turn at the north. So the, there's three fire cisterns that would serve for fire protection. Just recently, we undertook an archaeological study and submitted that to the board. No archaeological resources were found on the property. So if you have any questions, be happy to answer them.
The applicant prefer the cluster?
Yes.
Could you identify the town-owned land on the cluster map?
So the town-owned, town-owned plant, property right now is this. It was obtained primarily for trail purposes. In addition, there's town-owned open space here, as well as to the north and to the west. So we provided the open space, abutting that existing open space, plus additional to widen this trail linkage here as well on the south.
Okay, thank you. We have Ben Dixon.
Good evening, Planning Board. This is my first meeting, so just tell me if I step out of line. I'm Ben Dixon. I live right here, just at 10 East View Court, and my questions are for the applicant, really just what...
Just address us and we'll...
How large these houses might be, and if they'll have the same conservation easements at the front of the property that most of the houses in the area have, to keep in line with the current community.
I can't determine, you know, the normal zoning requirements. They'll be, like we said, average 57,000 square foot lots, and we are subject to the clearing restrictions of the Aquifer Protection Overlay District. So that was sized lots usually only allow 50% clearing, 30,000 to 60,000 square feet.
So an average size of a house would be...
I would imagine it's similar to what the neighborhood is.
Okay. Thank you.
And a conservation easement?
So you can't talk from back there?
Wayne, any kind of a conservation easement? We'll get an answer for you.
I think we'd talk about road, road furniture buffer.
We have not proposed any.
Okay. Stephanie Bran, Bran to five? Bran five?
Well, that being said, if the north view subdivision has road furnished buffers, it's something we would continue in this map. So we would look at the adjoining development and to maintain consistency.
Yes. I mean, I personally have had to take something down on my property because of the easement, so...
Can you state your name for us?
Yep. So my name is Stephanie Branafine, and I live at 10 Northview Hills Court. Again, this is my first time coming to anything like this, but I wanted to be able to speak on behalf of my neighborhood. You know, I think we've all seen a lot of changes, and everyone spoke to it in what's happening out here, and I think that what is being proposed does not fit into the way of our neighborhood, especially when you speak to the easement. I also would like an idea of, you know, are these houses all being built at the same time? Or is this going to be a disruption for us for multiple, multiple times where these four properties are being built? I would like to know the timing and length of this project. I mean, it's a disruption. There's going to be construction trucks coming in and out of our neighborhood at all times. We also live in Noack, so you'll be allowed to work on Saturdays, which is, you know, really unacceptable, I really feel, so, you know, want that to be spoken. So our lives are going to be disrupted from Monday through Saturday with this project. And I think it's not being held to the same standards that were being held in the neighborhood because obviously they're not following the same standards that we're being held to in the neighborhood in terms of zoning laws. So I just want those questions answered because I think it's very important for us to understand that.
Okay, thank you.
Should Wayne answer?
Wayne, do you have any response to that, or do you want to wait?
I'll wait.
Okay.
Good evening. My name is Gregory Bella Fure. I live two blocks south, I guess, of that, and I saw the other subdivision go up that these people are living in, and witnessed disruption and everything, so I can relate to that. But my question to the board tonight is, how many subdivisions are you going to put through, throughout the year? And how many houses are going to be put in? And the traffic on Noack Road is unacceptable. Now, I don't think the roads could handle any more subdivisions, more houses, until we address the traffic problem. And also, I, I participate in the trails and conservation out here, and seeing the amount of woods and open space that's shrinking daily, I mean, as you ride to Southampton from Noack, there's, there's houses being built constantly. I think there should be a moratorium on this, and we should just stop, think about what we're doing to the area. When we get a cohesive plan to save the area, then we could start up again. But right now, it's just like excessive. Thank you.
Thanks, Greg.
Hi, good evening. Donna Denon, 15, Northview Hills Court. My house is right here. According to my survey, there is open space on my survey. That's a part of here, going this way in a rectangle. So I, I was confused by this proposed development survey because it doesn't reflect what's on my home survey. I also wanted to point out that a lot of the people in the Northview Hills Court area who live on this side of the street, everyone had a different realtor, closer, builder. We're all told that that property was town property, never to be developed on. And I was trying to figure out, like, what happened? What, why were we all under this impression that that land was owned by the town, and now it's owned by a trust, and now possibly an LLC? So I looked into it a bit, and I think I found my answer, but I don't know these things, that the land was indicated as a conservation easement. And there's a memo that was dated September 14th to Ms. LaFaro from the Town Conservation Board, indicating that the applicant was currently receiving a tax abatement due to the existence of a perpetual easement. So it kind of made me think maybe that was why we were told it could never be built upon because the land was considered an easement. There was one other thing in this memo. I'm not sure if the applicant has had a chance to look at it, but that it said that the lot one here needed to be shifted down and not to be at the turn here of Northview Hills Court. So that, that's a memo that I suppose... down and not to be at the turn here of Northview Hills Court. So that's a memo that I suppose the Planning Board received on September 14th from the Conservation Board. I just wanted to bring those things to people's attention. Thank you.
Thank you. Evelyn Di Lorenzo?
Hi, I'm Evelyn Di Lorenzo. I live at 27 Northview Hills Court. And my house is in here. I have one thing I'm very confused about. If something is considered a geological overlay or a protected geological area, aren't there studies that should be done, like, by the town or by somebody who knows if it is or isn't? So I know it was classified as that and also protected water overlay?
Aquafor Protection Overlay District, right.
Yeah, so-
That determines the amount of clearing that you can do-
Okay.
If you're in the APOD, which is for short for Aquafor Protection Overlay District.
Mm-hmm. And so the geological site?
Is it a geological sensitive area?
Yeah, well, it's-
Archaeological.
Archaeological, sorry, yes. So it's listed as that, yes, so.
And they have to do a study on that. They have to do-
They did one.
They did do one.
Okay, so they have-
Which is both a historical-
They have experts come in and take care of that whole study?
Yes, shovel probes and-
Okay, so that was two of my things. Also, it's a huge, I know, I don't know if I'm a turtle lover, so it's a huge eastern box turtle area. I literally save at least 10 to 12 turtles a year on that street, and that's just me and my neighbors as well. And they go into that area. That's where, like, they're facing, they're heading that way. They come from my property over and back. And I've seen, like, a female that was squashed with eggs. So I know they're a, they're not protected or they're not considered endangered right now, but they are a vulnerable species. So I think that should be considered as far as a population for the eastern box turtle. And I'm definitely against this building. I think it's way too much for the neighborhood. I think it'll change the look of the neighborhood, the feel of the neighborhood. And we were told that nobody was going to be building on that. When we bought our property, we were told that. And many of our neighbors, when we walked the neighborhood, said the same thing to us, yeah.
Thank you. We'll try and get an answer for that.
Thank you.
Jim Di Lorenzo?
Thank you, Board. And just to echo what my neighbors have said, I think, and my wife, I think it's been well covered. There's just one additional point, which was mentioned by the applicant, which is the cisterns at the top of the road there. It was my, I had heard that it's potentially not sufficient to really support the current level of houses in case of a fire. And I think that has to be looked at as well because if we're adding potentially more residencies, that's a big concern. The other thing I do want to reiterate, and it has been said, is we emphatically were told at time of purchase that that land was not to be developed and it was preserved. And I think every neighbor on Northview Hills who purchased was told that. We purchased, I think, in 1999. So this is a big concern. We were misled or somebody was very badly misinformed multiple times to multiple residents of the town. Thank you.
Thank you. Wayne, can you respond to that, this conservation easement that people were told the land was protected?
Certainly, we'll look into the records, but I'm not aware of any conservation easement encumbering the property. We've done a title search. There's nothing recorded against the premises.
Nothing.
That being said, the plan that you approved, the board approved in 1999 specifically put, had Northview Hills Court veer to the west in anticipation that this property would be developed. So that was the plan, and now it's before you. But I can't answer why anybody would market the property or represent that the property was preserved unless they actually had a deed to the town or a conservation organization.
Okay, thank you. We're going to go to the Zoom calls now. Noyac, Northview, if there's anyone in the Zoom line who'd like to speak to this, the Noyac-Northview application?
He's bringing them in.
There is someone?
He's getting them.
Okay. As you start my video, I think we started.
So Martha Potter?
This is actually Mark Potter and Martha Potter.
Mark Potter, okay, yes.
I don't know what you can see. It looks like we're not, you're not seeing us.
We're not seeing you. Can you put your video on? We hear you.
Okay. And we, oh, start my video, very cool. There we go.
Okay, there we are.
Thank you. So we live on Eastview Court with the same zoning restrictions that the others on Roughview Court have, which is a 50-foot conservation easement, a 50-foot conservation easement in front of our houses before anything, even a sidewalk is built. And it costs us money to maintain that. But the first reason we object to this is that it blocks this public path, as the planner made reference to, which the community has used as access from Noyac Road to probably all the way to Midline Highway because it's been in existence for 200 years. You can see it clearly in the satellite images available on the GIS site, GIS site. Second, just to go back to the, I can't imagine approving any plan from this that doesn't require the same zoning restrictions that are required of the rest of us that live in this neighborhood. It's very important to maintain this, maybe almost make you feel like you're living in the country sometimes. Finally, and maybe most important, when you consider the often bumper-to-bumper traffic on Noyac Road, it literally is impossible sometimes to get out for, get out of Noyac Road to head to the west for five minutes. And this is true, it's only in July and August, but we're jammed with development here. And, you know, as a planning board, it seems to me that that has to be one of your responsibilities, is to assure that the overall development of the area does not exceed the capacity of the roadway. You know, you've actually knocked people down, that people have been knocked down and killed on that corner, the corners just east of Cromers. And we all know this. So I can't imagine approving any more development anywhere off Noyac Road until this problem is solved.
I just want to say one other thing. The Palmonok path is also a hamlet-to-hamlet trail. And you can walk it from our house on Eastview Court through the woods all the way to Trout Pond and further. And there are no houses along that, except at the very end near Trout Pond, and now where they're developing, they preserve near Trout Pond. But that woodland area is beautiful, and we use it all the time. And this would totally destroy that woodland area.
Okay. Thank you very much. Is there someone else waiting in Zoom to speak?
Yes, I have two.
Okay. Hello. Can you tell us your name, please?
Yes, my name is Diane Dager. I live on Northview Drive, which is on the northern, and when you first enter the community from Noyac Road, the first part of the road is called Northview Drive. I've lived here for 26 years. And the reason why, at the time we chose to live in Noyac was for its vast open space, bucolic beauty of wooded areas. So since I've, my family's lived here, I've seen the development of rugs path, the preserve. And now along Noyac Road adjacent to the Noyac Golf Club, the diner property is being developed. This community is rapidly becoming overdeveloped and not the beautiful wooded area known for its open space that it has always been. I've been a witness to the traffic increase and just the general busyness. People live here because they want to walk on these beautiful paths and enjoy the wooded areas. There are so many homes for sale on the East End, I can't imagine another four are really needed. And when the speaker earlier said that these homes would be consistent with existing homes in the community, well, the size varies on these existing homes. So I would appreciate something more specific from him. I know there are homes here that probably are 6,000 square feet and some that are 1,300 square feet. So I would like to have a more specific answer to that. But I think as a planning board, it is your, it's incumbent upon you to preserve the beauty of the East End and not have it end up looking like Nassau County. So I thank you for listening to me, and I hope you do the right thing.
Thank you very much. The next person on Zoom, please, for Noyac-Northview.
No more hands.
No more hands. Okay, no more in Zoom. Wayne, do you want to have some response to some of the questions that were asked?
Certainly. This is only a pre-application. We'll consider all the comments that were raised, as well as the comments of the Planning Board. I happen to look at the subdivision map for Noyac-Northview, and I do see that there was, and it's faintly on this plan, a conservation easement or buffer along the front edge of the lots. We'll certainly take that into consideration as well in our discussions.
Okay. Okay, hearing no more comments and no more questions, we'll entertain closing the hearing with a 30-day written comment period.
Motion.
Motion by Dennis, second by Craig, all in favor.
All right.
Opposed, abstentions, five in favor, two absent. Thank you for those who came. Do you want this clear?
Please, and I'll get you the other ones.
Okay.
I'm clear. Give me help?
Yeah, I'll do it. I just want to get the-
Okay.
Yeah.
Jackie, you gonna open both?
Yeah. Oh, this has nice stuff on it. Okay. Okay, we're going to open number five and number six together, the Lewis Road PRD site plan and subdivision. There are quite a few people who'd like to speak to this, so we'd like to take people who have not, who have not spoken at all from the first hearing. If you haven't spoken, we're going to give you priority. If no one is here to fit that bill, then whoever's here can speak. And then, of course, we do have Zoom people. So if you hear some comment that's already made, I encourage you, please, to keep your comments short and not repetitive, but we appreciate your being here. So with that, we don't need to do any here, a notice hearing. Wayne, do you want to do a very brief intro?
Very brief. Wayne Bruin Oche Marson Segabrun. We have Principal Ed DeVita here, Mark Kissi, and we have other consultants if any questions arise. Last hearing, we had 22 people speak. I believe everybody had a fair opportunity, and they'll have another opportunity, it appears, tonight to speak again. Some of the things we heard, just want to remind everybody of the process and where we were. This is a final public hearing, and the Planning Board's duty is to look at its preliminary approval and look at any changes and determine that the final application that we have is actually implementing your preliminary approvals. That being said, there was a question related to Seeker. Practically speaking, without getting too deep into the law, Seeker is intended to provide a methodology in which all the various agencies that need to approve a project have the opportunity to review one document so that every agency doesn't have to go through their own process and get their own environmental impact statement. So in this instance, the project that we're looking at is the subdivision of the land with a golf course. It's been that since day one. Actually, that's not true. In 2005, when I was before this board with the applicant, we had a proposed subdivision, and that subdivision was what I would call your standard PRD plan, no different than the Pines. I actually recall Chairman LaFaro at that time actually urged us at the pre-application stage to have a little more imagination, something with a little more resort kind of design, variety of house lots. Interestingly, it took the town board's moratorium and the adoption of the Esqog Glanews Plan to turn around and actually dictate what they wanted to see on this property, which was resort development, similar to what the Planning Board was looking for. Most importantly, to avoid the typical cookie cutter subdivision that would result in school-aged children. And that was a key element. And during the Esqog GIS, there was no less than 11 different alternatives studied by the town board and reviewed by this board. Subdivisions, proposals, variety of alternatives. Nonetheless, when the application was submitted, there was a full environmental impact statement required and reviewed several other alternatives. But all of the alternatives were for the subdivision of the land with a golf course. The town board's role was to allow us to have that golf course open, its membership open to the public. And when we got, when the town board failed to approve that element, we turned back to this planning board for subdivision, and it was with the planning board and the zoning board that determined that a golf course is a customary accessory recreational feature connected with the subdivision of land, and we proceeded. One of the big elements was that that change in the subdivision reduced the size of our clubhouse and other facilities because we no longer could have membership outside of the residents or the lot owners of the map. Those elements and all those changes were submitted in the preliminary application. And this board, after six months of review with their own consultant, determined that those changes didn't rise to the level of, that would create a significant adverse impact requiring any supplemental EIS to be prepared. You thereafter had your preliminary hearing, and you adopted your own finding statement. We then, in one of the conditions of approval, we needed Health Department approval. We had always continued to offer sewage treatment plant where no other subdivision in Southampton has offered. That required South County Department of Public Works approval, the Sewer Agency, the Health Department, and of course, the Pine Barrens, all of which, after your preliminary approval, we acquired. They all reviewed, adopted their own finding statements. And all the changes that were identified that resulted from each of those agencies, including the Pine Barrens, made this project better, more environmentally sensitive. And you've reviewed that. That's what's before us. We hope to have comments that are directed towards that application and those changes that are before you. Thank you.
Thank you, Wayne. So we're calling Michael Olestra. So we're calling Michael Olestra.
Good evening, members of the, of the planning board.
Evening.
I have spoken on a number of occasions and I'd like to obviously address this distinguished board one more time. Over approximately the last 10 years, many people, including me, have spoken about the Discovery Project's danger to our waters, both drinking and bay, but it appears to have had no impact. I would like to relate a testimonial from just yesterday that I deem relevant. I was fishing for snappers in East Quogue and a gentleman asked me how I was doing. Well, I responded the snappers were biting and I told him fishing was good. He said he lives in Bellport and there aren't any fish there and that he heard, and I quote, "The bay is a lot cleaner in Shinnecock." I guess we are all willing to ignore the potential danger to the bay, sending us back years, perhaps decades, if Discovery goes forward. But enough about water. After attending countless meetings, and I fear that this one might be the last, I have made some observations about the culture of Discovery Land. It appears to me as a neophyte with respect to zoning regulations and cluster building and environmental laws and the like, that Discovery seems to change the plans of the project constantly. They add things in one submission and in the next, they are gone. Again, the chaos that ensues makes it really difficult to accurately assess the plan and to know exactly what will be done and what won't. If the plan is inaccurate or incomplete and it is approved, Discovery wins. It appears to me that their philosophy is catch us and stop us if you can. That brings me to the second part of their approach, which is if you try to stop them, there will be consequences, perhaps even for this board. We have all heard about the professor in Florida that recognized problems with the Discovery Project and attempted to expose them. What did Discovery do? They threatened to sue her, to silence her. Some of your very own board members voted no on this project early on and they were threatened with a million-dollar lawsuit. They were silenced or left the board. Those that stand in the way are threatened. Now the time has come for the planning board to cut through all of the clutter and assess all of the facts, making sure Discovery is meeting all of its legal obligations. If there is any question as to accuracy of the complete plan meeting, all of those obligations set forth in the law, this planning board must have the courage to look Discovery right in the eye and just say no. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Olestra. Diane Larkin? No, Carkin?
Larkin.
Larkin, it is Larkin, okay.
Good evening. I'm Diane Larkin, resident of East Quogue and I'm on the board of the East Quogue Civic. We've been concerned about many things, but one thing is the ponds that are being built on Discovery Land property ever since, we've been very concerned ever since we attended the Central Pine Baron Meeting. The Pine Baron's review allowed two lined ponds for water recycling on the golf course runoff with a depth not to exceed 10 feet and they're not for recreational use. It took a long time for all of us to find the ponds amidst the mountain of Discovery Land plans. This is what we did finally figure out. On the lot grading plan, each pond is approximately 20 feet deep and there is no description or explanation of a lining. Other maps don't show a pond at all, but what is included in the lot grading plan are a pond house, which is 672 square feet interior, an outdoor space totaling 1,600 square feet, a dock, and an equipment storage attendant station totaling another 167 square feet. Clearly, this is being used recreationally as the pond house is listed as a comfort station with restrooms and kayaks, which are pictured in the drawings. These issues need to be resolved before any kind of a final approval can be given. Properties situated on the pond do not have any clearing restrictions or buffer areas. Please give us time to further our review of the plans because there's just too much incomplete and seemingly inaccurate documentation on these maps that have been offered for final approval. If I have any time left, I'd like to give it to Liz Jackson. Thank you.
Thank you. I'm going down this line, so Marissa Bridge.
My name is Marissa Bridge and I'm a resident of East Quogue and I'm on the board of the East Quogue Civic Association. I want to talk about some information I discovered over the last two weeks while trying to understand what is really going on with these plans. And this information concerns ZBA issues. In their approval of a golf course as an accessory use, the ZBA decision gave Discovery Land an 18-hole golf course and a one-story plus basement, 4,500-square-foot maintenance facility totaling 9,000 square feet. On the plans, we found these maintenance buildings instead. A two-story plus full basement administration and operations building totaling 13,000 square feet. A one-story plus basement environmental center totaling 5,500 square feet. A two-story plus basement turf care center totaling almost 14,000 square feet and soil bins totaling 1,400 square feet. A 500-square-foot single-story irrigation pump house and 300-square-foot irrigation well barn seem to fall under the ZBA permit. Two 500-square-foot one-story comfort stations are allowed by the ZBA, but on the latest Discovery Land plans, we found a farm stand and a trail house. Discovery Land claims all of this is covered under the original ZBA approval and we say it is not. These issues must be resolved by the planning board. The amount of time it took to search out the data for comparison prevented me from having additional time to look into other issues, but given more time, I will bring more discussion points to the meeting and for that reason, I ask that this public comment time remain open. Liz Jackson has been working on these plans tirelessly for two weeks and the extra time I have, I would like to give to her. Thank you very much.
Okay, let me move, thank you, Elizabeth Jackson up. Is Elizabeth Jackson here? So Ms. Jackson, I'm taking you out of order.
I would have waited my turn to go at the end.
Okay, but we have lots of other people to speak, so...
Yes.
Please be sensitive to that.
Well, that is kind of where I'm coming in at this, in that, my name's Elizabeth Jackson, I've been here before. This is a majesty of project with a developer so eager to be, with a developer so eager to get these plans finalized and ready to go on the conditions. You, just while I was waiting, I wasn't expecting to come in. Okay. I have had many hours a day for the past two weeks to pore over these plans. I am probably one of the only community members that has had that time due to circumstances and my ability and my willingness to do so on behalf of all of my other community members that would have, but they have lives and children and family and the expertise that I do. And trying to get them here today, some are on Zoom, others have sent emails, some have COVID, some have, their kitchen getting renovated tomorrow. Life happens. That's why I am here on their behalf. It's not because only I speak or my comments are only about me, it's that I'm here on their behalf, making the comments that are new and fresh that you need to hear before you can approve this plan.
Okay, let's hear them.
I spoke at previous public hearings and that was after spending weeks, already preliminary, I talked about that. I apologize for not having something for you, but I've been working on it all day and no matter how hard I try, I can't easily wrap my head around how much of this needs to be worked on. I say that because the maps, I'm basically looking at the site plan maps as opposed to subdivision maps and they are sloppy at best. And I'm saying that respectfully because they do not include data. They don't include north arrows, they don't include tax map numbers, they don't include anything that you can even track when you're looking. So others, when they're looking at the information, are having to spend hours pains taking over all these files online or in person just to find data that matches up from one map to the next. And when I say they're not accurate, I wanted to try, actually, I could just go through this. I'm not up here, that's why it's hard. I could write it all down in description and get you a copy of it. Things like the, the maps are, have notations all over, all through them, all the lines, if you look closely at them, but there are no keys on those maps. There is no distinction on what any of those lines mean. You can extrapolate and assume what you want, but nothing is stated on the data map. There's also areas where they label things one thing and another. The Suffolk Canyon Water Authority parcel has been labeled in these maps, the current ones that are supposed to be so complete, is listed as a parcel seven, is listed as a parcel K, parcel LL, and is also listed in the numbers repeatedly as part of the KK parcel until you realize why that number is artificially high and it's because they added in the Suffolk Canyon Water Authority to it. That's not helping us figure out what's going on here. Things like the fact that the ponds are only located on like two or three of the maps at best and you can't really even see that they're there. How did they manage to do that? They've done that because they've created this whole new system of labeling because it was such a big project, but that's not our fault to have to do quickly reviewing it. They've created parcels that are in letters, they've recreated rec one, rec two, rec three, they've created OS one, OS two, S three, they've created conservation area entry gate, they've created, all of these things that are not coherently complete and located on each of the different maps. So it'll be scribed this way on one, something else on another, and it's impossible to bring them together. This is not helpful for them to provide you with this as a complete application map. There's also things where they just typically didn't proof at it, where on the edges of the maps, they say C map 602. The map doesn't exist, that's not a number in the catalog of our maps. They also have, I can't, they're not the ones that they put up, of course, but of the maps, it has a key, the only key on the map would be the one with the window saying which part of the subdivision this applies to. Those are so disjointed that you have to go through so many maps to get to wherever the next one is and they don't even include all of the area in the subdivision. There's gaps in between and labels all over the place. Again, not helpful if you're wanting to be concise on a project this large. They also are not showing the details because they're using the words rec one, rec two as the areas. So when you look at the ponds, those are in rec two, I think, on the golf course, but you don't see them because it just looks like a topography change. But they're going from a 50-foot natural grade to 30 feet. That's intentional, that's designed, and it includes a long deck and an attendant station. There are parcels that have conservation easements on them, don't know if you've noticed them, because it took me until yesterday to find them. Not all of the parcels, but a lot of the properties have conservation easements along the same side as open space butts to those parcels. But on these private properties, the area that is included in that for calculation's sake are the width of 10.02 feet or 10.42 feet. That's unheard of. Yes, it might look like, but that's crazy, except for when you multiply it times 100 or however many times you do it, suddenly you're making your numbers work, but you're totally undercutting the entire purpose of having these buffer areas. You couldn't tell me a 10-foot width of a buffer from a 10.02, but they've included it on these plans. Why is that? Only thing I can figure is because it's part of the calculation madness that is here. That, to me, is junk, you know, planning on their side of it. There's also no indication of any conservation easements on the majority of the plans. There's also no recognition of open space on most of the lots, on most of the plans. There's a map that shows the open space lots and then the rest of them are void of any recognition of that concept. There's also prominently displayed on almost all of them, I don't even have to figure out what it is. Good example. If you are looking at a distance of that plan, which is the one that you have on the computer, this is just for talking points, what is the feature that you noticed first?
You have to stand by the mic, Elizabeth.
What is the feature that you noticed first?
This is crazy.
You can't hear me close enough? Okay. You see the word whole number. The golf course is taking total precedence. It's also underlined, so not only is it a large tag that they've used, it's underlined. And this is a map that's supposed to be erosion control. Those are just ways that they're junking up these maps and being disrespectful to you and us when we're trying to look through them. So when I say I need more time, it's because these are the things that are making it impossible to read and review. As well, when you're looking at them, this erosion control map was supposed to show the soap fencing and project limitation areas. Also void on the majority of the plans when you look at them. That's important because when you don't have that regularly through all the plans, someone will not know that's there one day. And it totally happened because they've already been in violation with Pine Barrens because they sent a guy out to do some work and they cleared where they wouldn't have been allowed to clear if they knew it was a protected area. If that's happened on the first time they tried to dig or make any kind of action on the property, of course it's going to happen as they go along. I also don't know how you're going to block off Lewis Road, not Lewis Road, Spinney Road with soap fencing. Soap fencing comes and goes on the plans if you look closely. It's near invisible to see, even though that's the erosion control map. Again, it doesn't have to be, but they've made it that way. That's why we're asking for more time and that's why this is so nauseating and confusing to everyone.
Okay, we hear you. And can I ask you to put all of this down on paper, which is...
I'm trying.
And just get it to us, because that's...
Okay.
Because you have so much content that it would be helpful to us.
And it took me so much time to get to it. That's what makes it hard to then have the time to put it down on the paper and get it submitted, because it was only two weeks' time and I was working as quickly as I possibly could to even figure out where the stuff was.
Do you have any professional expertise in land use or...
Yes. I worked for the town for five years in the environment division and I have also been following and reading these plans for at least the last 10 years, going to all the different Pine Barrens meetings and reading and watching all the, you know, different processes as we've gone. So it's not a matter of just coming out of the woodwork, it's that I and others that aren't here, because they've even passed away during this time, worked diligently to continuously try to make sure that these guys were staying on the legit side of these plans. And the fact that now we look at it and everything seems to be going backwards is very disheartening. If development happens, fine. This cannot be the way the development is going to happen or we're just, we shouldn't have wasted our time for the past 10 years, which is sad because I don't feel that it was a waste of my time.
Thank you, thank you very much, Elizabeth. Try and send us that report. Okay, Eric Woodward?
I like the written reports.
An expert. So my name's Eric Woodward, you can even come closer. We're married. We're on Edgewood's Road in Southampton, and I am here as representative of the Trails Preservation Society Trails Advisory Board. And I've just passed out a, you've probably seen our memos on, everything that you do comes through the Trails Advisory Board. So this is the sort of thing you usually get. I'm here tonight, because we've got a win-win that we wanted to present in person, that I think everybody will be pleased to, there's something positive that everybody can do, Wayne included. And the comments we had 2019 on this application, the pre-application, there were four points. And our main concern then was that there wasn't any provision for trails now. At that point, there were some reasons technically why not. Now it's a subdivision, and we always have trail provisions on our subdivisions, especially on properties that have existing trails. So we thought, okay, we've got to, we've got to do that. 2019, we had a recommendation for a trail on the property to be a public trail. But as number one on the, one on the map and on the letter, is we're taking a different approach, which we think, as I said, it's a win-win, because we're proposing a loop here, which is, the red is the boundary of the development. So this blue loop is an accessible trail that would be standards for wheelchairs, six feet wide, and it's off, it's not, it's no longer, we're no longer saddling the applicant with a trail on their property. We're proposing to be on the town land that's to the east. And partly, this was inspired actually by our liaison with the town board. Cindy McNamara, just at our last meeting in September, said, "The town board wants to have some recommendations for accessible trails." It's not something we have that, they looked, they said, they came to us and said, "I think this is a good idea for the town." So wheels started to turn, and that's what the proposal is, an accessible trail. There's one detail of why we, as Trails people, also like this idea, as a little bit of a variety from what we usually have in terms of woods trails, and that is tick avoidance. This trail will be possibly six feet wide, people can walk on it and feel more comfortable, because a lot of, a lot of people don't want to be in the woods these days. We want to present a different, a different type of trail idea. Now, where does the applicant come in? I mean, here, I'm saying we're proposing a trail on the outside of the subdivision. Well, I think that this is a public amenity, but it's also an amenity that they can sell, they can promote their development as being adjacent to something as glorious as this accessible trail. And we feel that they should... You ready, Wayne? You should pay for it. It should be, it should be a design done with the town, but in lieu of the fact that they aren't doing any trails on the property, that there should be, perhaps it's part of park fee, perhaps there's some other way that they can contribute. The win-win is that you're going to look great. You need help in terms of public image, and this will be, this, this, something, you know, as I say, it's something good. And since it's on town land, though, they wouldn't be saddled with the ownership and maintenance. Once it's built, the town would maintain it and would own it, liability. I've always heard before the applicants say, "We don't want a trail on our property, because somebody's going to break their leg and sue us." So that's the solution on this. Number, number two, just briefly to finish off the list, in the middle of the, middle of the development here, is a resident linking path. So we wanted to be clear that the residents who are going to be using this path partly have a, have a direct link, that it's not sort of forgotten or ignored on the developer plans. And as I say, though, it's for residents. We're acknowledging that they want a private development, so they can. Number four on the list up here, at some point, the sand, the sand mine over here will probably be developed. And at that point, we'd like there to be already on record a trail easement. This in the development is listed as open space, but it's owned by homeowners association. So we want 800 feet of trail easement, so that trails here can connect to the future trails up there. Last thing is Spinney Road, and I think you've dealt with this a lot before. I haven't been involved in the discussions, but there was a big issue. Was Spinney Road is a Southampton Town Road? How is that being preserved as a Southampton Town Road? I know all the maps now that I've been able to see. Interestingly, I haven't seen some of these maps, and we'll have to be looking at them now. The process does seem to be rushed a little bit. We've only had two weeks also since our meeting to go over this. But anyway, Spinney Road is now listed on all the maps I saw as Southampton Town Road, which means there has to be some provision for public coming up Spinney Road from Lewis to keep going as a trail, which is what it is now, to get to the end of the property. So we trust that, that somebody's working on that in the, in the planning, planning staff. So I think, I think that covers it.
That's great, thank you.
Quick question, Eric, while you're up there.
Yeah.
What kind of, on that loop trail, what kind of like a trailhead are you envisioning? Because it would be for physically...
Yeah, the trailhead is down here, the town...
Sort of like a parking, parking area now.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Are you envisioning any further improvement, like a comfort station, or just parking?
Um, you know, the, the, part of the inspiration on this was I went to the Calverton Airport Trail Development. It's been open only for a couple of years. They've got a nine-mile trail around the airport now. It's paved, it's multi-use, no motorized vehicles. Their parking areas are not restroom-equipped, I don't believe. But it was wonderful to be able to go, we went on bicycle, but there were walkers, there were people with strollers. Be a great amenity for the town.
What sort of surface were you envisioning for that, asphalt?
Uh, the one in Calverton's asphalt, but I think to make it a little more trail-like, it has to meet accessibility standards. But crushstone can be installed to be wheelchair-friendly.
Thank you.
Trails advisory would be part of the site plan process.
Yes, yeah.
I mean, I've seen the wheelchairs with the extra wide, you know, the wheels, you could almost have a couple of them stationed there, accessible, so with handicap parking, where people could access those specific wheelchairs, which would allow them on that loop rail, would be a really, really good idea.
It's a good idea.
Okay.
Wayne, weren't we really allowed to spend your money?
Since you're doing it already.
Thanks very much.
They'll thank us in the end.
Did you have a quick...
That's okay.
Susan Kearns?
I'm Susan Kearns. I live on Spinney Road in East Quogue. And I was not going to be redundant, and I didn't want to bring up the issues that have been brought up before about the environment, but I think it's interesting that everyone on your other applications are saying similar things, but I won't, because they've been said. Actually, I'm here to express my shock, and my outrage, and my disgust at the process being pushed by Discovery Land on this project. The most audacious aspect of this current proposal is the insulting way in which the consultants and attorneys for Discovery Land are bullying and bombarding you, the planning board, and the community, with maps and paperwork in an attempt to bamboozle you to approve something that is overwhelming in scope and constantly changing. These tactics are purposeful, and clearly meant to confound and confuse and overwhelm the board and the community, so that you'll push the project through without proper consideration of the future of this town, and with disregard for current laws and zoning codes. It is your moral imperative that you take the time needed to review the latest pile of papers pushed off by Discovery, and properly plan for the future of the environment, and thereby the constituents of Southampton Town. Thank you.
Thank you, Susan. Thank you. Bill Kearns?
Good evening, Madam Chair.
Good evening.
Board members. My name is William Kearns. I'm a 30-year resident of Spinney Road in East Quogue, and I guess I'm a 12-year opponent of this project. When this plan first appeared before the planning board months back, it was said that it was of primary importance to protect the residential character that existed on Lewis and Spinney Roads, and the rights of the residents. Now, months later, we are being bombarded and surrounded by a project, a project that morphs at the whim of the developer. Sewerage treatment plants, ponds, I read ponds that were 30 feet deep, are now including docks, large administrative offices in front of our homes, workforce housing that in nowhere reflects the architecture of the planned development. In fact, it more closely represents the architecture of the sewage treatment plant. This is so far removed from the ZBA decision to potentially permit a golf course that it boggles the mind. The developers cited existing homes in towns with private golf course holes usable only by the landowner as a basis for their case. None of these homes have restaurants, none have paid professionals and pro shops, none have payrolls potentially employing dozens of people. This is no longer a gentleman's golf course, for lack of a better expression. This is a big business, which the Pine Barrens law prohibits. I called Town Hall for a link to this project two weeks ago, and two people sent me the long-dead PDD application to review. I asked a planning board employee last week for a link to the application, and was asked, "Which part?" I responded, "The whole thing," and was told that administrative staff would not look kindly on such a request for so much information. Repeated calls to the planning board politely answered resulted in the link being put up last Friday, almost at the close of business. This plan has approximately 90 maps. How is this public, how is the public supposed to review and digest this information in such a short time? I suggest those involved maybe didn't want us to review everything here. In reviewing this plan with professional, I was told that it is not complete, not accurate, not understandable, and needs a deeper look. Fred Field, Stephen Englebright, the Town Conservation Board, people who wrote the Pine Barrens law, have made their opposition to this project known for years. The Schneiderman administration presently is getting hammered by residents for potentially proposing a sewage treatment plant in commercial Hampton Bays. We are looking at one in a residential area in front of our homes. Truly disgraceful. The sewage treatment plant in Sag Harbor, besides being offensive to the sense of smell, is daily adding nitrogen to Sag Harbor Bay, and is now being scrutinized by officials, village officials. It was suggested that Spinney Road be potentially turned over to the developers, when in fact both Shinnecock Hills and Southampton Golf Club have public roads going through the heart of their golf course. The public cannot be denied access. We cannot be neutralized. I will always be opposed to this project, less so had it been delivered as directed and promised. Too many variables, too many unknowns exist, it has changed too many times. The future of the Pine Barrens and our water supply lies in your hands. This will set a benchmark for all future development, as similar projects will use this one as a reference point, setting a dangerous precedent and potentially ruining the face of this town. I ask that the approval for this application be rescinded, at the very least, until a complete secret review be undertaken, and that this, and this project in its present form be completely reviewed, which I do not believe has taken place. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Kearns. Michael Marino?
My name is Mike Marino. I live in East Quogue. I've spoken dozens of these things over the last seven or eight years. I can't understand, I have a question. How could you have an environmental impact study or statement on something that's still in flux? I just saw arrows, that they're moving golf holes from here to here. How could you have an, so isn't the environmental impact study or statement stale, if you're moving stuff around? That, that concerns, I mean, how could that be? And I have a question, who is the lead agency? Is that the planning board or the town board? Who is the lead agency?
Counsel, I think it's...
In this application, the town board was lead agency.
The town board was the lead agency, or is the lead agency?
It was the lead agency.
Okay.
Who was it then?
Yeah, because the state, in other words, if there's a question about that, the applicant or the agency has to ask the commissioner of the Department of Environmental Conservation of the state.
There's no question.
There's no question who the lead agency is. Well, this project then was voted down by the town board. So how could we even be here? The town board's lead agency, it was voted down.
It wasn't voted down, sir.
Oh, it was. I was there when it was voted down.
There was the...
It was voted down, Mr. Finney.
Four votes.
It was voted down.
The vote was, as I understand, it was three to two.
You understand wrong. It was voted down.
Majority.
Majority, yeah.
It didn't garner a supermajority. The seaker was passed, completed.
Okay, so...
You know, this action here...
We hear your questions.
Because there's, there's a, there's a form here that's state-required, it's supposed to be filled out by the lead agency. It's 10 pages, and I took the liberty of giving it to you, because if you're the lead agency now, because the town board can't be the lead agency, so much you've got to fill that out. And there's a couple of questions there about the impact of it on groundwater. Question three, I, "The proposed action may affect the water quality of any water bodies within or downstream of the site of the proposed action." And there's two answers, moderate to large impact, or no, or a small impact. I have a lot of questions. How did they arrive at this answer, if there is an answer? I don't know where that form is, because we don't know who the lead agency is. Or at least, I don't know. You guys might know, but I don't know. But if the lead agency is the town board, this can't be right, because it cannot be right, because they voted it down. I was there, I saw them do it. And there's another question about, not the, not the water quality of water bodies downstream, which would be the creek, Weesa Creek, Little Weesa Creek, and Shinnecock Bay. I happen to live on Little Weesa Creek, and there's a lot of baby fish there. The other day, I emptied an Achilles trap, and I couldn't believe my eyes, there was hundreds of little tiny crabs, smaller than my pinky nail. That's fresh water, the crabs spawn in fresh water. So if you're going to have a sewage treatment plant, and now you're moving it around, the sewage treatment plant moved. So how could the environmental impact statement be valid, if you're moving this sewage treatment plant around? You're moving golf holes around, you're moving non-residents around, shouldn't that be revisited?
We hear your questions.
Somebody who knows, I don't know that stuff, but somebody should...
We hear your questions, we hear your questions, Mr. Marino.
All right.
Okay?
All right, but there's another one about groundwater, and it says, "Is there storage of fuel or pesticides?" And that form that I just gave you, that has to go to the state from the lead agency. So if that last approval, application was knocked down, or voted down, which it was, that has to be redone.
Okay, we hear you.
The state's going to hear it somehow.
Thank you. Bob DeLuca?
Good evening, Madam Chair. Can I approach? I have handouts for you guys.
Sure, yeah.
So you'll have to read them now.
Good.
Taking your advice to hand up in writing, what I might otherwise...
Okay, we'll pick, we'll pick them up. Thanks.
Thank you very much. My name is Bob DeLuca, and I serve as president of Group of the East End. I have six points to make, one recommendation, and a couple of footnotes. Let's start with the, start with the footnotes. Earlier, you heard counsel for the applicant basically talk a little bit about the MUPDD application, as it, you know, the issue being about whether or not it was allowable just to get the golf to be private or public. Take a look at the file, take a look at the impact statement. It's a multi-use planned development district to have multiple uses. The golf course is an element of a resort complex, the resort complex is now what's in front of you, so it was a little more than that. With respect to the East Quogue land use plan, yeah, in fact, this property was to be looked at, to be considered as an MUPDD, which it was, and turned down by the town board. So it was definitely in there to be looked at, it definitely was looked at, and it was rejected by the town board. So just as, you know, to kind of keep the score here. So just as, you know, to kind of keep the score here. You know, take a look. And at the risk of a piling-on penalty, I can't help myself with the SECR. I've been teaching it since 1992. There is a problem here with SECR, okay? You guys can split it any way you want. We're five years into this project. Neither the subdivision nor the site plan has ever had a coordinated review, never had a lead agency determination, and never had a determination of significance. By the way, SECR provides an option for the planning, for the town board, to have conferred lead agency on you when it lost its regulatory authority because of the denial of the change of zone. They never did that. It's in there for a reason. You're not the lead agency. They can't be the lead agency because they do not have a permit to give. Only you have a permit to give, and you're not the lead agency. And how do I know that? Because everything that you write with respect to your finding statement says you're an involved agency, to which I say, "To who is the lead agency?" The gentleman that spoke before me, he's dead on. I don't know how you split this, but the problem is not just procedural, although SECR is procedurally and substantive in its nature and has to be compliant. And in the stuff that I gave you, you'll see a New York Law Journal article that speaks to that issue. But one of the reasons you want strict procedural compliance is so that the outcome gets you to a place where you don't have all the questions that you have coming before you today. The problems metastasize over time. And when this, had this project come in, had lead agency been conferred upon you by the town board, you could have done what you wanted. I would suggest you probably would have done a supplemental environmental impact statement, but you would have taken it from there. But by not doing that, you're in limbo. And let's talk a little bit about the second point I wanted to talk about is let's talk about the supplemental environmental impact statement. You hired consultants, planning consultants, who came in and told you you don't really need to do a supplemental environmental impact statement. Okay, problem number one. Look at the SECR handbook. You couldn't do it anyway. Only a lead agency can make the decision to do a supplemental. That's not me, that's the state of New York. So I don't know what they were talking about. Even if you said, "You know what, let's go do a supplemental." You can't. There has to be a lead agency. But you guys never determined that you were lead agency, so you couldn't do it anyway. Here's the second problem. Those same consultants sat in front of you, and I urge you to go back to the 24th of October 2019 work session and watch this agony play out. You were on an action deadline. The developer said, "I want a decision." The consultant said, "Oh, I thought we would get all this information before we got to this point," which they didn't get, which they also said was the reason why they said you didn't need to do a supplemental environmental impact statement, even if you could. So they got blown up, right? They got smoked. And they're sitting there, and take a look. The guy says, "You know, you might consider denying the application." Okay, works for me. But you didn't do that because you were under pressure, and there was enough people on the board that said, "You know, we're done with this, we're moving on." But the fact of the matter is, the consultants that you hired didn't do you a good service on those two fronts. Now, I'm a fair guy. They did do you a service on something else. They looked pretty closely at the potential groundwater implications of this project. And one of the issues, you may remember, was the issue of a dispersion analysis, which is basically, rather than doing a mass balance across the entire property, you try to look at areas of concentration to see what's gonna happen. The map that is now in front of you has a sewage treatment plant added to the southern part of the property. Their concern, in their report and in their presentation to you, was that the concentration of nitrogen generation at the southern part of the property put it closer to Weesa Creek and was more likely to have an impact. And they said, "We should get a dispersion analysis to take a look." Makes sense, right? But it never came. And it never came as they sat there and were like, "Gosh, I hope we were gonna get that," but we didn't. So that really wasn't helpful to you. There's a problem in following the old PDD finding statement as well because that finding statement, and you may recall this, Dr. Chris Gobler, right? Everybody knows him from Stony Brook, very famous guy. You know, he basically came here and he did some work for the town, and he did a little report. And that report came out, and he basically said, "Look, in order for this project to come close to the standard planned residential development, this report, which is in your handout, October 2017, you need to have a series of environmental mitigation measures to get those numbers to work." You may recall this. Now, some of them are still in the plan. The fertilizer limit is still in the plan, sewage treatment plants in the plan. Here's what's not in the plan. A 33-acre land preservation proposal at the headwaters of Weesa Creek. That's out. A sewage treatment plant for East Quogue Elementary School. That's out. A million-dollar septic improvement fund for East Quogue. That's out. So those things were basically left off the table when it got to you, and the applicant was saying, "Look, those were community benefits. You know what? We don't have to do it in this project." And you'll see that in their stuff, they've said that. But that's not what the science, not me, that's what the guy from Stony Brook said, "You need it." So the problem with reaching back to that finding statement for the old project is, one, this project is different. Things are located in different places. Your own consultants had a question about what all that meant with respect to groundwater, and the person who looked at it for the town and said what you needed to do, that all got left out. So you adopted a finding statement as an involved agency to an agency that doesn't exist, lacking information that was supposed to be there that isn't there. And if you want to know why people are freaked out, that's why. So, moving on, let's talk just a little bit about the ZBA decision. The ZBA decision, which I have in the handout that I gave you, you've heard from others, and I won't repeat it here, that it was an explicit approval for an accessory use, which was 18 golf holes, maintenance building, as described, pump house, two comfort stations, that's it. Now, some of the language, which is even more important, is in there, and I've highlighted it. And it says, "We're not opining on any other activity basically going on on the property," which is, they weren't talking about any of the other resort amenities. They were just talking about whether you can have 18 holes, and we're litigating that case. I know Counsel last, Cy Paget Counsel, last time said the case is over. No, we're still in litigation about the standing on that case. But setting that aside, they talked about the issue of letting you have a golf course, not a resort complex. So I said, "Oh, let me take a look at the use tables, right? This is where this all started." The reason that the golf course ended up in front of the Zoning Board of Appeals is because your use tables don't speak to that issue, right? Then the zoning code. Try to find any of the stuff that's proposed here in those same use tables. They're not there. Now, I don't know who's giving you, like, who's helping you. Your staff should be telling you this. Maybe it has to go back to the ZBA. I don't know. But it's not there, and you do not approve our 200 subdivisions as PRDs with a resort on top of them, usually. And whether or not it has a golf course, and whether or not people are from the public or they're members and owners, that's between the ZBA, and they rendered a determination on that, and we'll fight that out. But all of this other stuff, how did it get there? And it gets worse. You all adopted a preliminary subdivision map, and I don't even know if you know this. There's a paragraph at the bottom that also approves everything in the site plan. It's in the materials that I gave you. Look it up. How do you do that? The details of that site plan were never looked at in the draft environmental impact statement for the PDD. They weren't. You have an approval for a subdivision that has a narrative approval for all of the other stuff, too, and you approved it. So I guess, I don't know, without maps, without grading, without drainage, without circulation patterns, without fire safety, without where the garbage is gonna be stored, all the things that you look at in the site plan. And the last time I checked, you don't give out preliminary approvals on site plans. You have an approval. I don't know what that is. You ought to take a look at that, right? What is it? And if, in fact, it was some kind of approval, it's expired because your approvals only last for two years on a site plan. So it's over. So the application that you received in May from the developer on this site plan is a new application. And I raise it because, in the spirit of trying to get this thing back in the bottle, you have an opportunity to take that application, to review that application, to determine your lead agency, to make a determination of significance, and to suck all this back into a process that people can understand. And by the way, in 1975, when the legislature adopted SECR, that was the point, that we had exactly what's happening now. I saw on your agenda for work session, there's a traffic study or something that you're thinking about. Okay, that's great. But that's supposed to be part of looking at the overall action. What's the impact of the sewage treatment plant being moved? And look, I don't even have, half of that stuff wasn't even the developer's idea. The Pine Barrens told them to do it, right? So, but you still are the guys in charge, and you all have to know what it is that you're approving. And if the Pine Barrens Commission has one point of view, and you have a different point of view, and somebody else has a third point of view, the purpose of SECR, and I think Mr. Bruin and I would agree, said, "You get it in one place, at one time, in one document, at least we all know what it is. And we can fight about whether we like it or not, but you will know, and we will know what it is, and you will have some idea whether you approved the subdivision, whether you approved the subdivision in a site plan, whether you're now pursuing two separate approvals on two separate applications, whether it's one application." You ought to, and I don't, honestly, and I say this respectfully because I would be in the same place. I don't think you really know. I don't think this board really, no, and some of you guys are new, so it's gotta be even harder, that you know what you're approving. And if you close this hearing, you're on an action deadline, and anybody who was on this board can share with the newer members what happened the last time. You got on an action deadline. The day arrived. You didn't have the information you wanted. There was a three-hour chaos session, and the thing got approved. This is the largest development proposal to come in front of this town in 30 years. And I honestly don't have a gripe with whoever proposes it. But the point is, whatever eventually happens is on you. It's not on them, it's not on your staff, it's on this board. That's why you're here. That's why you're appointed to represent us. And if you don't get it right, there will be somebody else. It won't be these guys. Somebody else is gonna walk in here, and they're gonna want one. And then the next person is gonna see it, and they're gonna want one. And I've been doing this since 1985, and I am so sick of doing this. Do your job, figure out what's wrong, fix it. And by the way, this application is not complete, so you can rescind the approval to even move this far or get the applicant to agree to let you go as long as you need to go because your code, and I don't know if anybody tells you this, has a very specific verse, chapter 184, I think, which tells you, "You can only approve an application for this, for this public hearing, when SECR is complete or there's a negative declaration. And if things need to be adjusted, they talk about using SECR to do it." So the tools are there. I don't know how many different ways the public can tell you. Honestly, I do believe these things can metastasize on their own because things just go crazy. Get it back in the bottle so we at least know what it is. Look, these guys, they know what they want to get done. They'll give you what you ask them, but we don't know what's going on, and I'm afraid that you don't know either. So end of the day, I hope you do your best with this. I really appreciate your time and patience. But this is the biggest thing we've looked at in a very long time, and I hope we don't screw it up. Thank you.
Thank you, Bob. Thank you for the documents, too. Ann Algeri?
Good evening. I'm Ann Algeri, a resident of East Quogue. I also sit on the Town Conservation Board. I am not representing the Conservation Board. They have sent in an advisory report to you. After Bob's presentation, there's nothing left for me to say. I agree with it 100%. This is too big to get it messed up. It has too much impact on the whole town, on our water, on our surface waters, on everything. And it's a mess. You know, Mr. Bruin said, "Oh, well, the application really hasn't changed. In fact, we've made some environmental improvements." He cited the sewage treatment plant being moved. Yeah, it's being moved further south. That's going to impact on the waters. Some of the holes have been moved. Those are closer to the school. We have children there. They're going to be breathing those pesticides. I mean, that's just only a little thing. All the things that were not included that Dr. Gobler recommended, this is not an improvement at all. And how the heck all these accessory uses got in when only a golf course and a few other items were approved, I have no idea. And to be able to think that you can go back and use something that was approved from a PDD and apply that to a PRD, I don't know where you get that unless you're just trying to get something and push it through. But I think it's a mess. And the people feel it's a mess. The consultants may not feel it's a mess. The developer may not feel it's a mess. The lawyer for the developer, whose job is to get this through, may not feel it's a mess. But we do. And we live here, and we're affected by this. So I hope that you do, that you follow Bob DeLuca's recommendations, that you rescind this, the resolution, to determine that this is complete, that you go back to square one. And the members of the board, I think you have three there that have not been on the board since the start of this. This is monumental to go through, but it needs to go through. So I hope that you also look at both the site plan and the subdivision plan together and do not do it piecemeal. It needs to be viewed in its entirety. Thank you.
Thank you. Megan McDonough? Megan McDonough, not here? Okay. Yes, we'll take the Zoom, people?
My apologies. I think there was some type of delay. My name's Camden Ackerman. I'm representing the Southampton Business Alliance. I want to read a short letter on behalf of the Business Alliance and then also offer a couple comments.
Okay, can you give us your name again, please? I'm sorry.
I'm Camden Ackerman, and I'm with the Southampton Business Alliance.
Thank you.
To the Town of Southampton Planning Board, I am writing on behalf of the Board of Directors of the Southampton Business Alliance, our 100-plus local business membership and their thousands of local employees to voice strong support of the Discovery Land project proposed in East Quogue. The quality and caliber of Discovery Land projects speak for themselves, both locally and globally. Their management team has consistently evidenced a commitment to the betterment of our large community. The Southampton Business Alliance feels this project will provide a huge economic benefit to East Quogue and to the Town of Southampton. This will create many local jobs, both during and after construction. The new homeowners will support local businesses for decades to come, and the new homes will generate sorely needed tax dollars to support the East Quogue School District and local services. The project has arguably met more scrutiny than almost any other project in Southampton Town. And I would actually correct that statement and say that it is the only project that has ever met this much scrutiny. Discovery Land's track record evidence that they consistently go above and beyond the requirements for environmental protection and preservation, they are proven good neighbors on the East End and far beyond. We thank you in advance for joining us in support of this project. Sincerely, Cheryl Hether and the Board of Directors of the Southampton Business Alliance. I also want to add at the end of that letter, which the letter has been submitted to the board, respectively to Mr. DeLuca's comments earlier. Number one, when the suggestion is made that this plan was voted down years ago, I mean, I'm not a mathematician, but three to two really doesn't meet that standard to me. Additionally, when this was being discussed over a decade ago, there was a lot of opposition to the project, which, instead of full opposition, they offered the solution that, yes, this is an as-of-right development, which is what comes under the PRD standards, and suggested that there should be a horse farm with 118 houses surrounding it. So I think that there's a lot of manipulating of history going on that I hope that this board sees pass, and I really appreciate your time, and I really appreciate your focus on this matter. Thank you.
Thank you. There was another name in person that didn't get called, sorry, Ray D'Angelo?
He's in the hall, I think.
Yeah, I saw Ray walking in.
Should I go get him?
Yeah. If you don't mind.
Ray D'Angelo?
Yeah, thank you.
I think Megan is here as well.
I thought she was on Zoom.
I thought she was in the hallway.
Sort of alert them the hearing is inside here.
Megan, you're up. Okay. Ray, you're next. After her.
Megan McDonough, East Quogue. I don't know how we can approve anything by Discovery Land because if you look into the properties that are listed on the website, most of them aren't built. There's a... There's focusing on Spanish Oaks. Let's see, in '05, Daniel Porter and a company, before '05, a CCNG Development Company. Discovery Land came in with the Hillwood Development Company in '05 and bought it. In 2011, Discovery Land defaulted on the loan, and the original owner, Daniel Porter, came back in and bought it. In 2012, Daniel Porter, oh, I'm sorry, CoAmerica, the lender, the lender that it originally defaulted to. So the lender bought the property. So now, you know, like, hi, you know, so now they own it. In 2020, nope, sorry. It's a little confusing, but 2017, a developer, they didn't state the developer, but I guess it's CoAmerica, the original lender. They got approvals for condos and housing. In 2020, now the property was approved. This is a 911. It's listed on, Spanish Oaks is listed now as Driftwood on the Discovery Land website. So, okay, now it's for a mixed use. That was in June. July 2020, now the developers are getting a public improvement, a PID for $25 million from the city council. And the developers at this time, on record, are in Arizona, based a Greenbrier, Southland, and again, a CCNG real estate, going all the way back to prior to '05. July 2021, the city council passes that the PID can go on top of now the village, but it's going to now be called the Backyard Development, which will be opening in 2024. And the Backyard Development is now going to be a multi-use project with an amphitheater and a main street. It's basically essentially like a strip mall. And now in April of 2022, preliminary work begins. So now the work's beginning.
She's confusing this with a different project.
I mean, this doesn't, it's insane. And did I hear that trails and landscaping and stuff is going to be?
Megan, are you here for the Lewis Road application?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, Discovery Land is all through this. If none of the, if some of the properties on his Discovery Land site are built, and I have, that shows that they're not built? So he's going to default on loans? I mean, he's already got the Driftwood landscaping trucks in here on Long Island. They're in Riverhead. And he also has an Atlantic or Atlantis. That's connected with some other, I have that, too.
We can only take comment on this project, the Lewis Road.
Well.
These are other projects.
I'm sure he'll end up defaulting, and Driftwood will come in and save the day, which isn't built. I mean.
Okay, put some of your comments and point of view down for us.
We're going to have a.
And then we'll have a clearer, a clearer train.
It's 20 years, and the one that's on his website still isn't built. And his work trucks are in Riverhead. So I don't understand. Why aren't they building in, in, I don't even remember where, Texas, Austin, Texas? Why aren't they building there? Why are they here when we're supposed to be doing trails? Those are, you know, come on, guys, seriously? I feel like, God, we're in for the long con here. 20 years, ask Austin.
Okay, thanks, Megan. Is Ray D'Angelo here?
Yeah, he's right there.
Ray D'Angelo?
It's Ray D'Angelo from Hampton Bays. And I'm chairperson. Committee members. I'd just like to back up for a second and talk a little bit about the importance of this land that this project's going to be built on. It's the aquifer recharging area. And our water system here is groundwater. In New York City, it's service water. In the 19th and 20th century, the city fathers realized the need for, you know, the city was growing in population, and they realized the need to expand their water system. They went up and got the Croton Reservoir. They developed the Delaware headwater areas. They kept doing this all the way up until 1950. Now, in 2021, we had a record draw out here in the East End of water. And our water comes primarily, gets recharged from this, the prime balance areas where this project's going to be built on. And we're getting away from the main objective here is that we live on top of our water. Now, they want to have a sewage treatment plant, I understand that. And when, but these plants are all nitrogen-centric. In other words, the whole thing is we're going to reduce nitrogen. But that's not the only problem. We have all kinds of classes of chemicals. We have forever chemicals, which are PFOSs and PFOAs, 1,4-Deoxane. We also, these chemicals are a class that are very stable molecules. They go into the water, they're protected from the ultraviolet rays of the sun, which destroy molecules, and they stay forever. And eventually, maybe seven, eight, 10 years, they migrate into our water system. This is what happened in Hampton Bays in Site One, which necessitated them to build the aggravated charcoal filtering system to take out the PFOAs. That system now, though, is shut down in the winter because it's not winterized. 1,4-Deoxane, there is no economically viable treatment for it. And these chemicals are so insidious, they're measured in one part per trillion, which is 112 zeros. So this is what it's about. Tonight, I know it's that night, it got late, it's a school night. I was going to have children come up here from the school and let them, because I'm 73. I don't know if I'll be around, but they would be certainly be around when they're going to want to have clean drinking water, and it's going to be contaminated with these chemicals that are all part of our modern society. Especially that this is a golf course, which we're going to have to have fungicides, pesticides, fertilizer, all kinds of chemicals put on it. It's almost like a chemical factory being put on this area. And the points of it has been demonstrated, this year, the Suffolk County Water Authority is going to pump from wells in Flanders to Salto because the aquifer there is depleted. It's heavily polluted. So it's, and that's in the general area. So this is pristine water here that we're going to mess around with. And once it's messed around with, it's done. So again, the sewage treatment plant sounds all great and everything, but it will not touch these chemicals. And again, a golf course needs, you know, herbicides, because they keep the grass in an artificially, an artificial state. Grass wants to, it gets hot, wants to go to seed. And the greens are kept very short, so they need all these chemicals put on it to keep it that way. So the sewage treatment plant, you know, it's all well and good for nitrogen, maybe, but not for these other chemicals. And also, if they're going to have a clubhouse, there's degreases and all this stuff. It's 90,000 square foot, feet, so we can't lose sight of this. Maybe not for me, but my grandchildren, that's what I'm concerned about. What are they going to drink? So again, now, just going back in a more technical thing, because I've been involved with the Hampton Bays Downtown Overweight District. This SECR that they filed has been, it's so segmented now, and so many changes have been made in it, that they really should have to file another SECR. It's like, the analogy is like when you go buy a car, and they come out with a car, you wanted a red car with a black interior, and they come out with a car with a red car with a black interior, but instead of six cylinders, it's four cylinders. Instead of having a sky roof, it doesn't have that. And this is the same thing. And I know you guys are under a lot of pressure. You've been put under a lot of pressure to approve this. And I'm saying you have to stand up for it, and you have to think about those children that are going to go to school tomorrow. What's going to happen to them? And what are they going to drink in 10 years? Those are my grandchildren, that's why I'm here. So give it some serious thought here. This is not a simple decision, because once it's done, it's gone forever. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. D'Angelo. Back to the Zoom. Are there some other people in the Zoom queue?
No. Sage, can you say that a little louder? Do you have anybody on Zoom?
I don't have any hands raised at this time, no.
No more hands, right? Okay. And no additional comments? Wayne, would you like to say anything before we close?
Certainly. Purpose of the public hearing was to hear all the public comments. I think you've heard the comments, number one, on your last meeting. And essentially, I believe we heard from the same people, very similar comments. We would expect, as you normally do, the public hearing would be closed, and there'll be a written comment period for anybody else that wants to submit, and we would be able to address those comments. Unless you have any other further questions related.
Anybody on the board have any questions? No? Anybody else in the audience who would like to make a comment before we close this?
You have to use the podium, state your names.
Mike Moreno, East Quogue. You know, I've come to dozens of these things, and there's no money in it for me. And we come because it's the truth, what we're trying to knock down. I mean, think about it. Pesticides on top of the water. Downstream is the creek. The nursery for Shinnecock Bay and the fish. I got nothing against these guys. They want to build houses. I understand. It's five acres only, it was like that for a reason. We're here without profit. You know? It's not good. It's not good. And you don't have to decide this right now. Okay? You guys have to be brave. We need you to be brave.
Okay, take that. Yes, please, Ann.
Just a question. If you close the hearing tonight, does that mean that you then have to come up with a determination in 30 days?
No.
No. We'll close with a 30-day written comment period, and the application is up for review.
So no decision then has to be made?
No.
Okay, thank you.
Well, there is a timeframe that kicks in.
Yeah, depending on what we do.
So you can still then make a decision to, say, rescind it or that it is not complete? If you close it? With the applicant, or that you're?
It was deemed complete at some point.
We would need new information submitted to rescind the completeness. And we're going to review Mr. DeLuca's submissions and all the other comments.
Okay.
And then our counsel reviews it as well.
And then after reviewing that, then you make the decision to either rescind it as being complete? No?
Right now, it's complete, unless, as I say, there's information that we've received that warrants this board to rescind the application. And it would have to be legally sound information that it goes through the attorney's office, that we've failed in some capacity. Otherwise, it's complete.
Were you on the ZBA?
Was I on the ZBA? No, I was not. My mask was throwing you off.
Anybody, yeah, anybody else to speak has to come up to the podium. And are you going to start doing rounds now? Like, you're going to go rounds?
We have a couple of people who want to speak. We'll let them speak.
Well, we might.
Just to clarify, I think the question is, you know, we've had the issue of the action deadline coming upon the board at a time when there were still questions that the board wanted answered. So I think the concern is, how do you get yourself in a position where you can get the information you need, however you get there? But the applicant, obviously, a clock starts ticking when you close this hearing, and within a certain amount of time, you either have to extend with the agreement of the applicant, or you deny the application, or you make it, or you approve the application.
There are all those options.
So I think that's the concern, that people are just wondering whether or not your clock starts ticking this afternoon for the.
No, the stock clock starts at the end of the written comment period.
The clock starts when you close the public.
Public hearing.
62 days.
62 days.
From tonight.
Unless, unless the action deadline is extended by mutual agreement with the applicant. There's information coming forward, oftentimes, it's extended. But state law mandates an action 62 days from tonight.
From the, from tonight.
From the close of the public hearing.
Our town code requires that.
State law? State law?
For subdivisions, but not site plan.
But not site plan.
But we have a subdivision.
We have a subdivision.
62 days.
Okay, I hope you deny it.
Okay.
I'm glad that was clarified. And the action of the board, as is typical with every application that you have, is to review the public comments, the record, determine whether the action should be approved as submitted, approved with conditions and modifications, or denied. That's standard. And you can't make that decision without closing the public hearing.
And we are going to look at the whole process, the viability of this process, as far as I'm concerned.
I would hope you would.
Yeah.
I think it's been well established what the law is, and it's been stated in the record exactly what the process has been. And most importantly, this board is bound by its preliminary approval, which was challenged, dismissed by the court, and remains unchallenged.
Okay. Who sent us some courage? You? I said, you sent us some courage. I'm joking, because it's a very heavy mood. Well, take your courage.
Every time I've come up here, it'll last several years.
Okay. I get it. I get it. Come up to the podium, and then that's it. Then we're closing this. But I certainly appreciate everybody's comments.
It's Ray D'Angelo again. I get the feeling like, what is the exercise here tonight? Why did we come up here? I mean, last week I came, I missed the Met game. It was important to me. This is, okay, I'm here tonight. I'm here tonight, I'm tired and everything, I'm not that young. What's the exercise here? This should not be closed. I don't know how we got here, but it, you know, the SECR is not adequate. And that's what the problem is. It's been, this plan has been changed so much, I've been trying to keep up with it. It's like, I can't. And the town has actually even become a co-developer with them. So this is, really has to be looked at. I strongly urge you to have the courage not to close this hearing and not to be bullied by it. You know, the lawsuit was dismissed because of standing. Anybody that drinks water, bays in water, or cooks in this water has standing in this. It was a mistake, the judge did that. It should be re, the suit should be reestablished. So I urge you to have the strength and the courage. Thank you.
The record is open, the written record, it's open.
Yeah, but it's closing, but we got a 62-day.
Yeah, well, we're not keeping it open for delaying. Got the public comments.
Okay.
The record is being kept open, just for the, just for point of order. We're taking written comments, and there were a lot of written comments already that we have. And we urge people to submit whatever was stated in writing. You can send an email. All comments are copied to the board. We read them, even the, even the form letters. So the record continues. But I'm going to move that we close the public hearing and keep the written record open for 30 days.
I'm going to vote no on that. I want it kept open, but I don't have the votes. So you need a second on his motion?
Second.
Second.
Second by Craig. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? It is closed with a 30.
One opposed, two absent.
I had a question if I could ask before.
Yeah.
How long would you keep the public comment period open for?
Unprecedented.
The public comment period is like, the longest is 30 days. I've done.
Written comment.
So you have, the hearing is closed by majority vote, and you have 30 days to send in your written comments. We have a lot of good comments, thank you for people who submitted, and we'll just move forward. Thank you for coming.
You need to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Email address? Claire, what is, somebody asked what the email address is? Claire will tell you. Motion to adjourn?
Motion by Dennis, second by Craig, all in favor.
The clock's ticking now.
Yeah, box ticking now, I think.